Call of Finance Committee Order, roll call please.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Police. Alderman Lewitan. Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Coles. Alderman Kneipp.
Here.
Minutetaker Forum is present. I name motion to approve the minutes for our cover 25th, 2007.
So move.
All in favor? Oh, he's seconded it?
You asked for motion.
Oh, do I have a second on a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Information only soft. Software update. Oh, I'm sorry, report and recommendation audit report. Maggie, we did complete the audit report. Ms. Powell does have a PowerPoint to go over the audit report. So I'll turn over Maggie.
Thank you Chairman Wesley. Before I begin, Mr. Luke Harrison from Sickich is here, and I thought he might like to address the council briefly before I go through these highlights.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. The financial statements have been audited in accordance with general accepted auditing standards. They include our opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give, namely that your financial statements present fairly the city's financial position and its changes in the financial position for the year, and that they contain no material misstatements. So basically, that it's what we call a clean opinion. The report's organized to meet the requirements of the GFOA Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting Program, which again is the highest level of disclosure that a local government can attain, if you will. And it will be submitted for the rigorous review by GFOA and should again get, I don't know how many consecutive years Maggie, a certificate's been awarded, many. So I'd be pleased to try to answer any questions you may have either now or after the presentation or...
Does anyone have any questions? No questions, then Maggie, would you take us to slide presentation?
Okay. Well, I know you've all read the audit from cover to cover because it's so easy to read. But I thought I would take some of the highlights just to emphasize the differences between the annual budgets, which as you know are very, very detailed, and what actually happens. When we budget, we do the best we can with what we know at the time the budget is passed. Many things change throughout the year. And I wanted to highlight what is different at April 30th of '07. So we start out with the general fund. We thought there'd be a deficit of about $130,000. Instead, we ended up with a $1.1 million surplus. But one of the biggest reasons for that is because none of the local 150 retro pay or wage adjustments were paid as of April 30th of '07. And we had budgeted them hoping that that contract would be finalized before the end of the fiscal year. That's a big part of this. Another thing that we've discussed at several meetings is the fact that the investment income was so much better in all of the funds for this year. You'll see that $290,000 just in the general fund was additional investment income. I know the council's been concerned about building permits. For April 30th of '07, we really only had an increase of about $10,000 over what we budgeted. Really nice success with fines. As you know, there were some new police programs in the budget last year. The administrative towing has been highly successful. And we're also collecting the contractor's registration for a full year now in the building department, which we didn't have before. So some of these types of items that are new revenue line items are helping the general fund a little bit. You'll see other miscellaneous income. That's really mostly due to a change in our Irma reserve. The Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency is the agency that handles the city's liability insurance. And every year, they tell us what we have in the insurance reserves with all the other pooled with the other communities. That's going to be based on our claims experience and what premiums we paid in for the year. So while it may look like cash coming in right now, it could just as easily flip next year and go the other way. We put it in miscellaneous because it's unusual and it doesn't happen every year. There were a couple of tax collections that were lower. Sales taxes were a little bit lower. And on the next slide, you'll see that I've highlighted some of the main taxes that Wooddale collects in its general fund. And I think it's kind of good to look at the last 10 years and see how those taxes have trended. Other than that, we did transfer the monies to the Economic Development Fund per the council direction. And we did not make a $50,000 transfer from the tourism fund to general fund. That was simply because there was a temporary cash shortage. That'll be taken care of in the current fiscal year. This is the chart I was talking about. And I also call your attention to our new statistical section. The back of this audit book is full of some really interesting details about Wooddale going back 10 years, and that starts on page 94. So if you look at nothing else in the audit, it might be good to look at all of our big sources of tax revenue. Look at what's happened with the equalized assessed valuation. You can track property taxes for 10 years. A lot of these are new requirements from the Government Accounting Standards Board. And so you'll see a lot of new exhibits. But all this data is more meaningful when you can see the trend. This particular slide is showing you property, sales, income, and use tax. You can see the peak of the sales tax happening in 2002. And it's begun to decrease, but it seems to have leveled off. 2006 and '07 are pretty close to each other. Use tax pretty much tracks the same way. If you look at property taxes, they have remained relatively steady. The only increase in property taxes is based on the actual increase in the assessed valuation. When the city extends the taxes, or when the city proposes its tax levy and sends it to the county to be extended, we sometimes get a little more tax because we have higher EAV. But essentially that, and as you know, that rate has gone down every single year because we don't even have any general obligation done any longer. But this shows a better picture. We've always been over $2 million with these taxes. And we, the high for sales tax was in 2002, a little over 3.5. Never hit that again, probably never will. Unless there's some great big development. Okay. The water sewer operating fund, we thought that would have a very large deficit this year. But it was because of the capital projects that were included originally. And then those were deferred until a subsequent year. We did and still are having some problems with our water sewer revenue in terms of tracking some of these old accounts. $155,000 of it was lower than what we had budgeted. I think we've done better. The auditors worked with us last year to try to get our gallons billed closer to our gallons consumed. And right now, we're running at close to 90%. We'd like that to be even higher. But because we've got an old accounting system and because we are, we're running into situations where the meter reading devices that are red aren't in sync with the actual water meters. There's an ongoing program in city services to go through those, especially the commercial accounts, change those reading devices out so that we capture more of the water that's being billed. I think we did better at April 30th of '07. I know it will be better at April 30th of '08 because we've made those changes in the meters. The water fund again, had higher investment income. We didn't have the labor contract settled, so we didn't spend about $436,000 that we thought we were going to spend. And overall, the expenses were lower primarily due to the fact that we didn't incur the engineering costs for the water capital projects. So, you know, those kind of travel together. Excuse me. Sanitation fund, I think we thought that we were going to have a slight deficit. Actually, we ended up with a surplus. Again, we've got higher investment income. Sanitation revenue is finally matching the sanitation expenditures. If you'll recall, several years ago, we had found out that the sanitation fund was always paying the general fund an administrative fee, but it was never being factored into the cost charged to the customers. So finally, that's beginning to change, and now we're getting that fund in shape. We've also added some new customers. And the operating costs were slightly lower, again, because there are some salaries charged to the sanitation fund, and there weren't the raises from the union contract. commuter parking lot fund, we thought there'd be a deficit. We ended up with a surplus. If you'll recall, the city of Wooddale received IMF monies. And we are supposed to pledge amounts of money from the general fund to put with those IMF funds in order to provide platform lighting for the, that's what we designated, platform lighting as the project. So we did transfer in the money from the general fund into the commuter parking lot fund because we knew we were going to be receiving those IMF monies. We wanted to make sure they were segregated and kept in one place. So that's that $100,000 of transfers in. We had a little bit of higher fee income, and those are from the parking permits and the daily parking fees. Investment income was up. The Metro Depot improvements were put off, so we had budgeted for that, and that didn't take place. Again, lower operating expenses. Some of those operating expenses had to do with snow events, and there weren't too many of them. So that's just, that's always a guess. The higher miscellaneous income has to do with those IMF, some of that IMF money. And finally, lower grant revenue. The grant revenue goes along with the metro improvements, and we can never guess what that is. We do our best to talk with the engineers and see what we think is going to happen. It's a matter of timing only. Capital projects fund, we thought the deficit would be 200, a little over 200,000. And actually, we have a surplus. Two things here. The Metro Railroad Crossing, again, we budgeted amounts based on what CTE proposed. So we put grant revenue in there, and we put expenditures in there for that project. They don't take place at the same time every year. So we had more money in there in expenditures and more money in there in revenue, and neither one took place, not to the tune that we had budgeted for. We also had some street improvements that, I think in this case, came in lower than budget, unless they were deferred. I guess Mr. Holmes could answer that better than I. And finally, we had higher investment income in this fund as well.
Can you interrupt one second?
Certainly.
Gary, maybe you can answer that one with the road projects. I know the budget came in, they came in lower than expected, but we then added more road projects repaving this year. Is that going to affect this report or no? You said it came in lower earlier, so we added a few sections.
That's for the current 2007 project, which will be the fiscal year from May 1st of '07 to April 30th of '08. We did come in considerably lower on the '07 project, which then caused us to add additional streets so that we came back projected to be closer to our original budgeted amount. We added streets. The '06-'07 budget would have been Montclair-Iroquois.
Right, but...
That would have been the primary project.
But I'm saying this one here, a street improvement minus $147,000.
Would have been the Montclair-Iroquois...
Montclair, okay.
...Potter Project.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Road and Bridge Fund. We've got higher investment income, a little bit higher road and bridge tax collections. Again, that has more to do with the equalized assessed valuation than anything else, and lower operating expenses. But I think we had projects deferred here as well in Road and Bridge. Motor fuel tax, we were pretty close. We have a little smaller deficit than we had budgeted because we had higher MFT monies come in and higher investment income. That's just about it. Not to confuse anyone, but you'll see leases capitalized. When we do our budgets, we do them on the cash basis. So we put the amount of money that we're going to pay to rent the Vactor equipment or some of our big trucks as an expenditure. But when we get to the end of the year and we actually prepare the financial statements, we have to capitalize those leases. It's just as if we were buying a piece of property or buying a building or putting up a building. It's a capital item, so it ends up in the balance sheet. But for purposes of our budget, we always put it in as an expenditure so that as the checks are written, everybody knows that they were authorized. So you'll see this flip. You'll see $92,859 of leases capitalized, which basically comes out of the fund, making things look better. But then you'll see higher expenses of 102. They pretty much net out. It's all, this has to do with accounting things. And we're not playing, we're not doing funny books here. This is just what you have to do at the end of the year. Tourism fund, we thought there'd be a deficit of $119,000. We actually ended up with a slight surplus. Again, we had higher investment income. Hotel motel taxes were higher. We didn't make that transfer to the general fund of 50,000, so that is still owed to the general fund. Lower expenses, and finally, higher donations. If you'll recall, every year, the Special Events Commission does its best to raise awareness in the community of the special events that are going to take place. And then various corporate sponsors come across with their donations. So we don't want to count on those when we do the budget because it's too, it's a little bit premature. At the same time, we always recognize those contributions in the financial statements. So this past year, $10,576 was collected. I wanted to show you the, what we call the unrestricted fund balances. Just as a quick review, the fund balance is made up of all the assets minus all the liabilities for each fund. And you come up with a number called fund balance or, you come up with net assets. But you also have things that are capitalized. That's all of the roadways, the buildings, the equipment that the city owns. So when you look at these financial statements, you're going to see that there's part of the net assets that are actually restricted because they're covering the cost and the depreciation on those fixed assets. What I'm giving you here is the unrestricted. This is basically going to be the cash in the bank plus any accounts receivable that the city is owed, minus the accounts payable that we owe at any given time. So if you want to call this spendable, this is about as close as it gets. Just keep in mind that like in the water fund, when we have an accounts receivable, it could be one or two months billing in there. We don't necessarily have it in the bank. It's been billed to customers, and we are in the process of collecting it. But to give you an idea about how the city's funds are, all of them are positive, first of all. Secondly, that 8.9 million is about 12 months' worth of operating expenditures. You may have received a letter from Gary King, the DuPage County Assessor, talking about his concerns that the tax bills are going to be late. If they're late, the cities obviously won't be collecting their money. Some cities, this is going to present a real hardship because if they need that cash to pay their payroll, pay their utilities, they're not going to have it on time. They're going to have it late. In Wooddale, at least you can be assured that we keep enough cash balances so that we keep the doors open and the services provided to the residents. We'll lose some interest income, certainly, if we don't get the property taxes on time, but it's not going to close the doors. So this is good from a standpoint of the general fund to have this kind of balance. Special Business District Fund, that's an old fund. The only thing that's left in there is cash waiting to be paid for the two commercial properties that were part of the original Special Business District. If you looked at the management letter from our auditors, they mentioned, why hasn't that paid? It's still being brought up. It's an open item again. But we do have the money. It's already been, it's already been put in that fund. It's been sitting there earning interest. When we finally pay off that debt, that $25,000 of interest income can go back to the general fund. So it will happen at some point. Capital projects, we actually thought we would run the fund balance down pretty low, and we did. But thank goodness, the non-home rule sales tax is now being collected because that should be about $2 million coming into that fund. The Assistant Finance Director told me today that we've collected again, the second month of collections. We're right on target with what we budgeted. So good news, that's coming in the way we had hoped. Land Acquisition Fund, as you know, the city bought several properties and had to borrow some money to do that. There's, the only thing that's left in that fund right now is a little bit of interest income that was earned when we had some funds. Grants Fund, that one's pretty hard to project. We get grants from time to time. Sometimes they're substantial. We earn some interest income for a short amount of time. And that money is there, basically sitting in the bank account, ready to be used if we have to match some sort of a grant. Equipment replacement, we've done some careful shopping on the equipment that we've been purchasing. And we've also deferred some purchases. Sometimes that can't be helped, especially when you're buying specialty equipment like snowplows or squad cars. We may put it in the budget, we may plan on spending it, then we can't place the order to hit the right fiscal year. So equipment replacement money, it's nice to know there was $95,000 in there, but we spend it in accordance with the fixed asset replacement and the equipment replacement schedules. Information Technology, we had budgeted some more monies being spent for the computer software in '06-'07. But since that project didn't officially begin until a few months ago, some of that money is still sitting there in fund balance. Economic Development, this is a new fund that was set up based on direction from council. The money came from the building permit fees that were collected in '05-'06. So, and that fund has earned a little bit of interest income as well. But you do have, you do have some monies available now in the Economic Development Fund. Water and Sewer, 5.3 million in unrestricted fund balance. Again, though, I want to remind you that a lot of that is not cash. It's accounts receivable that we are constantly collecting. Commuter Parking Lot, I know that was a concern in some of you, or all of you should have received a memo from me about train station financing. That would, part of that money would come out of the commuter parking lot. And finally, the sanitation fund is looking better because as I said, we finally have those rates matching what we actually pay for garbage collection. Police Pension Fund, $15 million. That is all segregated money. None of that is available to be spent by the city. It is all for pensions. You'll recall that the city has always levied property tax for the police pension fund and also added to that, based on the request that comes from the police pension board annually. When we start the budget after the first of the year, I'm sure we will get another request from the police pension fund. And it goes along with funding not only their current service cost, but their past service costs. That's why we have to, we have to keep increasing what we can put in that fund. Road and Bridge Fund, motor fuel tax, tourism, narcotics forfeiture, they all have adequate fund balances, nothing excessive. Oh, that's it. That's my last slide. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on that or on the management letter.
I have one question on the management letter. And Maggie did bring the valid point up. Since I've been here, this is the second management letter I have reviewed. The Special Business District liability, this has been in here twice now. I guess we don't have to discuss this tonight, but I'd like to know down the line when this will be corrected. Because this is twice now it's been here, and it's a mark against us, far as I'm concerned, when we get an audit report. So if someone wants to address that tonight, or we could address it later down the line. But I would like a question on that.
I could address that. This is a, excuse me, an issue that we've got ongoing negotiation. There's some monies that are, have been withheld that were collected as part of an agreement. We are in the process of working on another project. We have requested that some of those funds be applied toward that project. And rather than release those funds and clear that account and then hope that we would get those funds paid back to the city, the tactic that we have taken is we'll release those funds once we reach an agreement as to the balance. They're going to provide us some funds to offset some development of that pond project. So we're holding those monies back until we reach an agreement on that. We will have a release of the city from any further obligation for those sales tax revenues at that time. But my thought was, we've got the cash in hand. It makes it, puts us in, puts us in a much better bargaining position than releasing those funds and hoping that we'll get that repaid back to the city because of the posture of that improvement.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Maggie, I have a question, not so much on the audit, but you won't be here at 11 o'clock when we start talking about the train station. If I understood you correctly, or your memo, there's $350,000 in developer donations. There's $100,000 in that Metro fund for lighting or station improvements, whatever. And then you said 667 in the commuter parking lot fund, but how much of that is available in unrestricted?
Well, part of that includes those developer contributions, okay? They're already in that.
Okay.
616. I think we had one more developer that was supposed to be paying in this current fiscal year. And it's unclear at this point whether or not those permits are going to be pulled in time to, I think it's another 50. Is that right? The IMF money we did collect that's in there, that's reflected in that fund balance. Okay.
And how much is available in the parking lot reserve or the income that's available from, the revenue is generated there? Just approximately, I don't need to...
Well, it was, I think it was $616,000.
667.
667, yeah.
That total is unrestricted and available? Or if I understood you correctly, you said the 350 is already in there?
Yes.
Or is that 650?
It accumulated over the last two years. So part of those developer contributions came in in '05-'06. Some of them came in in '06-'07. And then finally, we have one more to come in this year. I'm not counting the one more that's supposed to come in this year. I'm counting everything we've collected thus far. So the $100,000 and the IMF money is reflected in that fund balance and the developer contributions. And I believe we were supposed to get 300 in total from the developers, so I think 250 is already in there. Is that right?
And I had forgotten about the set aside of the Economic Development Fund. And we have a new council now. Perhaps you may want to explain what that is set aside for.
Okay. I believe this happened during the budget last year when we were preparing for the '07-'08 budget. The council was aware of the fact that there had been several large building projects going on in the city and that the building permits that were being generated were larger than the city's average. And I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think we just, I think we arbitrarily set the average at $450,000 of building permit revenue a year and said anything over 450 should be set aside for an Economic Development Fund. The purpose being that there might be property that needed to be acquired. There might be investigation that needed to take place of various projects. And that if the city made a commitment to this and segregated those monies, these quote "one-time" revenues wouldn't just be thrown into the operating pot. And so that's why this fund was established. Nothing's been spent out of it. It's invested, and we earn interest.
In addition to what Ms. Powers has already presented, we were authorized to hire a consultant, and we were very fortunate to get a grant to cover most of those costs as well. So that's one of the reasons why we haven't spent it. The, we also did, as you recall, the first stage of a TIF. And that was also covered by a grant. And so that's what that money is sitting there for.
Any other questions? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is software conversion update. Maggie, you want to bring us up to date? I know we received a memo on that.
Thank you Chairman Wesley. Last week, we did have representatives from Springbrook Software come out and do four days of training in the finance department. The plan that we're following is what we call Train the Trainer. They will train us in finance. We will train all the other employees in the city. That helps us keep the training costs down because we do have to pay travel expenses for these folks to come from Oregon. And it helps us be available to our other employees as and when they run into problems. So it just makes more sense to do it. just makes more sense to do it. We had a pretty good start. We're going to try to phase in the purchasing and the accounts payable, and so for your next list of bills, the paperwork's going to look a little different to you, and the checks will look a little different, because it's a new system. And I'm sure that Mr. Wilson, who's going to be making sure this gets run tomorrow, will be on top of it, and everything will be great, because I won't be here. But anyway, we had fun going through our paces and trying out a few things. We won't be doing the largest part of this until January and February, that's the utility billing. That's the biggest, most complicated, and most vital conversion. And we'll probably have to do three to four data pulls before we're certain we've got everything we need. And we will run parallel system, which means we'll run in the old and the new system to make sure that we've got all the customers, all the history, all the right billing rates, and the water bills go out on time. So that's going to be taking place January to February. So for the next six weeks, we'll be working on getting all of our purchase orders that were issued on the old system into the new. We'll cross over and start processing the vendors' invoices through the new software and using the new checks, and we'll phase in business licenses and cash receipts as we go along. So the outside information technology vendor that we use will be installing the software on another 25 employees' computers in the next few days, and then I'll begin doing some training on purchase requisitions, and then after everybody screams and yells about that for a couple of weeks, and that settles down, then we'll go back and do some more processing of invoices. Because it's a hard, complicated area to do, but we want to have everybody trained and up to speed before we get into utility billing and building permits. So that's where that stands.
Okay, that was only for information only? Or if someone wants to make any comments on it? Okay. Information item, DuPage County Water Commissioner highlights. On your package, you received a DuPage County highlight for water. Maggie has a PowerPoint, short PowerPoint on this. Go ahead, Ms. Powers.
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. I don't know if the council received the full DuPage Water Commission audit. You know, it's voluminous, just like the City of Wooddale's audit, but there's always interest in what's going on with the commission and how much revenue they're collecting, and you can see here that they get 45 million from selling water to the member communities, and that sales tax keeps creeping up, so they collected over 36 million in sales tax, and then finally, they had investment income. If you'll recall, last year at about this time, Mr. Holm and I attended a meeting at the commission, and it was really to solicit opinions from the member communities about what the DuPage Water Commission should be doing with its quote "surplus" monies, because they have been collecting a great deal of sales tax, and lots of ideas were floated at that time. Communities were asked to think about it and consider various alternatives and get back to the commission with their ideas. And finally, I believe this was sometime around the end of last year, first part of '07, the commission decided to do several things for its member communities. One was to stabilize the rate and reduce it by 20 cents for the foreseeable future, and the other one was to send rebates to all the communities. Wooddale received $744,402 in rebates in May of 2007, and they also did drop the water rate by 20 cents. So that did help. But when you look at the financial statements of the Water Commission, you'll see that they still are taking their unrestricted net assets and they're reserving, they're designating them, so that if you read it real fast, it looks like they're not available. This is just their expenses. 78% of what they spend is on water, and they have tiny amounts of money spent on personnel and depreciation. So this is probably the most important picture of what goes on. There's $243 million of net assets that represent those fixed assets. Now here, we're talking about the property, the plant, the distribution lines, everything that the DuPage Water Commission owns and put together. So that's not cash. That's already been spent on fixed assets. The 33 million, 246, that's what's being held back based on the various bond covenants that DuPage Water Commission has entered into. And finally, we end up with unrestricted of $85 million. So that's like almost a year's revenue. But to get to that 85, the commission came up with all these various reserves. They're holding $43 million back for construction in the future. The 13 million is to stabilize that water rate with that 20-cent reduction. $12 million, almost 13, for emergency repairs. They've got some money reserved for the contaminated wells in parts of the county that are not members of the commission. I believe that's how it goes. And finally, they're showing 5.2 million of unrestricted. Reason why I think member communities watch this so carefully is, you'll probably recall, DuPage County got a public law passed a few years ago when they saw the money building up at the DuPage Water Commission, and got a deal where they collected $15 million a year for five years. And there's one more year left on that payment from the DuPage Water Commission to the DuPage County. But because the sales tax is coming in so fast at DuPage Water Commission, they're constantly coming up with new ways to reserve those unrestricted assets so that they don't get grabbed.
Ms. Powers, the water rate stabilization, how many years is that planned for? How many years would the 13 million seven cover to stabilize?
I think they'll probably keep adding to that. I don't know exactly. I think that's a question we'd have to pose to the commission, but I believe the stabilization was to be for the foreseeable future. I do not think that they were going to, you know, drop it 20 cents this year and then go back up. My impression is, this is the rate they want to keep it at for the foreseeable future. And one more thing, remember, the commission is just selling the water to the member communities. Member communities have all the expenses about distributing the water to their own customers, okay? Keeping that infrastructure in place, paying for it and repairing it. The commission doesn't do any of that. So that rate that's being charged for the water is strictly to have the City Chicago send it to the commission, and they make it available to us. All the big costs come with the personnel that are involved with running a water utility. But that is what the commission, that's their intention. And they did indeed make that rebate, as I said, to all the member communities, and Wooddale's water fund has a lot of large capital commitments over the next five to 10 years that need to be covered. So it's good to know that the City of Wooddale's fund balance or unrestricted net assets are available to do some of that work, and also the fact that you've increased the water and sewer rates so that we keep this fund healthy, so it can afford to do the repairs that it needs to do, repairs and replacements. Any questions on DuPage Water Commission? I think that's all I have. Oh, yeah, I wanted to show their debt. The revenue bonds are one section of their debt, and the GL bonds are the other. Revenue bonds were the bonds issued for all of the communities to connect to the system, and the GL bonds were for the DuPage Water Commission to do their fixed assets and their actual plant. So that's why they have all those bond commitments. You may recall, we've talked about this before, that Wooddale pays about $125,000 a year towards settlement of those revenue bonds, and it's considered a fixed cost. We must pay it in addition to the cost of the water. All member communities pay it, and it's based on a pro-rata share of how much water you purchase from the DuPage Water Commission.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. I didn't consider a future meeting, six months budget, account review, DuPage County soft up, stormwater fees. Are they fast-moving that, or what's the deal on that? I thought there was a fast track with that. I mean, I just don't want to miss that.
They're not doing much with that right now.
Okay, because I know at first...
It's kind of slowed down because of the, everyone's concerned about that. They were trying to move it.
Okay.
Unless Gary has some additional.
Okay. Any other items to add on the agenda? Okay, we'll be making a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee. If I have a second. All in favor? Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Public Health Safety and Judiciary Committee. I would like the minute taker to note that I'm present now, and so the only people that are missing are Alderman Coles and Alderman Police. The first, well, that takes care of one and two, the call to order and the roll call. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October the 11th, 2007?
I'll move.
We have a second. All ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? Then the minutes are approved. We'll get on to the report and recommendations. District 7 report on Choice Program. Mr. Corbett, I understand you're prepared to talk on that.
Absolutely.
Are you going to talk from there, or are you going to go to the podium?
He's calling PowerPoint.
Oh, you've got a PowerPoint, I'm sorry. But still, which would you prefer to talk?
From here, it's fine.
All right, please go ahead from there.
Thank you, Alderman. As you know, since 1999, we've been partnering with the school district in one way or another with an after-school program. I'm joined tonight by John Corbett, the superintendent of School District 7, and Jim Di Palermo, he's the Choices Coordinator for the Choices Program. We've been pleased to be partnership in partnership with them in this program, and tonight, we're going to be, based on the budgeted number that we requested in the budget, we're going to be asking for approval to go ahead with that payment to the school district to support the program. So, Mr. Corbett.
Thank you very much. Before I start my PowerPoint this evening and the description of the program, I would just like to inform the City Council and the mayor of how appreciative I am as superintendent of the relationship that we have with the Wooddale Police Department. Both Chief Benowitz and Deputy Chief Vesta are not only responsive to the school for all of our needs, but they're very proactive in terms of working with us. I regularly hear from either one of them, like I said, on a regular basis in terms of checking in with us and school safety. So I just feel that that's very important for me to let the City Council know about what a wonderful job the Wooddale Police do with their communication and work with keeping the children of the Wooddale School District 7 safe. So it's a very, very, very good compliment to them. So my thanks to both of them. This evening, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Choices Program, as Deputy Chief Vesta said, and Jim Di Palermo is the administrator for that program. And as Deputy Chief Vesta said, we've had a long relationship with the city in terms of providing this after-school program for at-risk students. Years ago, it began at Georgetown where there was a Resource Center, and then when Michael Smoot was here, superintendent, and there were some problems with the funding, we brought it into the school district. And one of the issues was that children could not get, all children couldn't get to Georgetown after school for the after-school program. By keeping it in the schools, the kids were already there, and they just stayed after. And several years ago, we had funding that was pulled that was provided by DuPage County through the DuCap program. That's when the city stepped in and provided us with $10,000 funding. And over last year, we, in cooperation with the city, the school district put in 5,000 more and got a commitment from the district, from the, excuse me, from the City Council for another 5,000. So that's what we'll be talking about this evening. I'm going to pass the microphone to Jim, and he's going to talk a little bit about the goals of the program, and then I'll talk about the budgetary issues.
Thank you very much for having me. Our Choices goals, our academic achievement, mentoring relationships, community involvement, parent involvement, and having the students make positive choices. Choices is an after-school program designed to help our at-risk students. Students served have been identified by certified teachers, social workers, and administrators. Our Choices staff includes certified teachers, paraprofessionals, and our social workers. They also include, we also ask that the parents attend mandatory parenting classes, which we offer during the evening hours. If our students are at risk, we want to help support the families to also make positive changes in their home. We operate three days a week for one hour. We provide the students with a nutritious snack, because the day could get long for them, and transportation as well is provided to the students. This whole program is provided at no cost to our families, thanks to the City of Wooddale, again, and the Wooddale Board of Education. Our curriculum, things that we really try and strive for are homework assistance, which includes reading skills, study skills, problem-solving, and test-taking strategies. We also target social skills, which include our organizational skills, making good choices, and following our pillars of character.
Last year, our program, with the $10,000, we were able to provide services for 45 students. The student-teacher ratio was approximately seven and a half students to one teacher. It was, the program ran 61 days. We had four parent education evenings, and we did not have any social work services. With the additional funds, we are able to serve now 60 students. Our student-teacher ratio is basically the same. We are still at 61 days. We have four parent education nights, and these last two items, in addition to serving additional students, we now have 50 hours of social work service available to us. So we have a social worker who can make home visits, contact parents, and again, we're talking about students and families who are at risk, so oftentimes, a social worker being able to provide that extra intervention is very helpful to these families. And then the last item is, in response to, you know, we're looking at a very specific child to pull into the Choices Program. It's more of an intensive program, and we wanted to try to bring in some of the features of what we used to have with the Resource Center, which provided homework help for kids after school, for all kids. So this year, what we've instituted is a homework help opportunity after school for the Wooddale Junior High students, and any students can attend this program. So we've taken some of this money to put into that area, and these are kids that may or may not have a structure at home or a place to do homework at home, and we have been servicing up to 25 students an evening in this program. And these children just go on the late bus. We run a late bus every night for children who are in after-school activities such as clubs or sports activities. So these children, in-house, we've been calling it Choices Light, but it offers the same type of opportunities for kids, but it doesn't have, it's not as structured or as, you know, as much of an intervention for them. Just some enrollment statistics. Out of the 60 students that we have this year in the Choices Program, not including the 25 that come to the homework help, there's 48 new students this year. We do have nine students who are in their second year and three students who are in their third year. And obviously, some students, depending on their situation, can use this intensive support, pardon me, more than one year. So that's just giving you some idea of how long children stay in the program.
We then polled, surveyed the regular classroom teacher where these students attend class. We asked the teachers three questions, which you see here on this graph. Has the improvement in their homework completion improved? Has the quality of that homework that's been turned in improved? And has their attitude changed at all? And what we did was, we asked the teachers to rate them from a 1 to a 4, 1 showing no improvement, 4 great improvement. We obviously would like to see everybody on the 3 and 4 side showing great improvement, but there are some that also didn't show any improvement. Those are the kids that would be targeted, that we try and offer a little more help to. If we couldn't get them the help that they needed, we'd look at other avenues. One more question on that survey was, how many missing assignments did they have this quarter? 0 to 4, on this graph, we would like to see, obviously, less missing assignments, meaning all of their assignments were turned in and on time. Again, we do see some to the right that had 5 to 7 or greater than 8 missing assignments.
And you have to understand, many of these kids, we're not showing you intake data. Many of these students would be over 8 or over at the beginning of the program, so there has been an impact on them. And then just for the last part, and I'm obviously not going to go through all these, they're on the handouts we had, but we also asked teachers of the students who are on the program, these are the regular classroom teachers who are responding to the survey, you know, what types of changes have they seen in the students that are enrolled in the Choices Program? And you can hear or see that, you know, there's lots of... And you can hear, see that, you know, there's lots of comments about attitude, completing homework, quality, again, attitude. MAP testing is a local assessment that we provide for our students. So just, the teacher indicating that his test scores, his students' test scores have increased in organizational skills.
And at this point, we would, you know, entertain any questions, any of the Aldermen had for us?
At this time, I would like the secretary to please note that the two Aldermen have come into the, come into the dials, that Alderman Nuncio Police is now here and Chairman Joe Coles of the Public Health, Safety and Judiciary Committee is now here as his assistant. I'm going to turn the floor over to the chairman.
Alderman Wesley, you have a question?
Yeah. I have two questions, well, a couple of questions if I don't mind. The junior high homework help program, who decides who goes in there?
That's a voluntary program. So the students can stay after if they need help. Of course, oftentimes, the teachers will encourage them and we also would encourage parents to encourage their students if they need help to stay after school and take advantage of that opportunity.
And that's a new program for this one?
Right, that, we added that this year.
Okay, my other question, and if, if a student's already getting some help from the state, that they come in and they do their whole case studies and they sign off and you get funding from the state because they taking other programs. Are the people exempt from this program knowing that they are getting help from the school by state funding or are they still eligible for this program too?
I'm not quite sure what you mean by state funding.
Well, if you do a case study with a student and you sign off in a case study that you are getting money back from the state.
Okay, so you're talking about a special ed student?
Right.
Okay.
Are they eligible for this program or are they not?
For the Choices Program, we do not give, we give preference to students who are not receiving services from any other aspect of the school, from the school district. So oftentimes, we look at kids that are getting special ed services, which means throughout the day, they may be getting pulled by a special ed teacher in small group or they may be having a special ed teacher come in and work with them or have the assistance of a teacher's aide. So what we've been looking at in terms of this money is we give preference for this program to students who are not getting any services at all because they're not eligible for any of the services. So it's kind of a way to spread some support out for kids that may have no other avenue to get some support. Certainly, the special ed kids, again, they, we give preference to kids that aren't getting services. Certainly, the special ed kids are more than welcome to stay for the after-school help. And I'm not saying that a special ed student would not be eligible for this service, but we give preference to kids that are not getting support from any other avenue.
On the junior high homework program, that is also, there's a teacher in there to run that program?
Yes.
For homework?
We have a couple of teachers in there.
And that is eligible for?
For all students, right. And obviously, with a couple of teachers with 25 kids attending, it's not as intensive as, you saw the ratio for the Choices Program. But certainly, some kids just come in there and we encourage kids to come in there that may not have a quiet place at home. Maybe they go home and they have younger siblings, you know, they just need a quiet place. And if they go and do it right after school before they get on the bus, then by the time they get home, it's done. So.
Okay, and what school does this program take, I didn't hear?
The.
This after-school program?
The homework help.
I know it.
That's at the junior high, right. And the Choices is held, there's a section at each one of the schools, Oakbrook, Westview and the junior high, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, I think this is a very good proactive program. It's obviously increased its scope since it's very concept. The amount you're asking for is very minimal and I totally support it and ask the rest of the council to do the same.
Thank you very much.
If I may, thank you. I'd like to compliment you on the surveys. That's the information that I was looking for last year as to some way to evaluate what you've done. And it is, even though there are some that haven't improved, it is impressive that you have improvement. The other question I have is about the parent education nights. They are mandatory?
Absolutely.
There's four of them for each?
Well, we offer four and they have to attend two. So that's just multiple opportunities. And we're very strong about this. If parents do not, in fact, if they don't come to the, their children are not allowed to attend the program until they go to the first one. And they are not allowed because we feel very strongly that, you know, we want to treat the whole family and the parents need, if they're going to have this service, which is basically free after school, their students are getting, particularly in the Choices Program, they're in small groups, so there may be seven children with one teacher, the child's getting a snack, getting bussed home and they're, and basically, the children come home, the students come home with their homework completed. That's a pretty nice thing for parents. And, but we're doing that because we're assuming that the child and the family are at risk. So maybe it's a single mother who has a job, doesn't have the capability, you know, works late hours, doesn't have the capability. And all we're asking of these parents is that they come to one meeting before their child is enrolled and we do not start the student until they go to that meeting. And then they have to attend one other one throughout the school year. And, you know, teachers have really tender hearts and I have really held the line on this. Many times, I'm getting emails and letters from them, you know, this child needs to get started. And I tell Mr. D. Palermo, they cannot start until the parent is, they need, the parent needs to do their part if they want their child in this program. And I feel very strongly about that.
And this is where the 50 hours of social work services will come into play then?
Some of it, Mr. D. Palermo does some, does some of it, but we also bring the social workers in to do that. The social worker is also available, that 50 hours, that if the teacher is having a difficulty with a certain student that she's working with. So it's kind of flex hours. She can contact the social worker, the social worker may stay after, may make a, if we can't get a hold of parents, sometimes we send the social worker out to the house. That's, you know, a nice way to track them down sometimes.
Excellent, thank you.
Well, seeing that I wasn't here for the whole presentation, I would like somebody else to make the motion to grant the budget for $15,000 contributed to this program.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Education and the students who are enrolled in this program, I thank you.
Number five, report and recommendations of PSIC grant program.
Thank you, Alderman. This is more of a informational only. We're not going to be asking for any action tonight. Obviously, in, with many recent events over the last few years, a lot of what you hear on the news is about interoperability, emergency service workers being able to talk to each other. That's certainly true on a nationwide basis and a regional basis. It's also true on a local basis, whether it be local drug investigations with multiple communities. Last year, when we had that high-end Cuban burglary crew and we had about 70 different members from different agencies working on that. The ability to inter, to speak to members from all different agencies and set up a talk group on the fly is a, is a need that's definitely out there and is part of the city's strategic planning process. We've been planning for that somewhere between 2009 and 2011 to move forward with that. The DuPage County 911 Board, the Emergency Telephone Systems Board, they've taken the lead on a countywide basis to go out and fund the infrastructure for a countywide radio system. What would it require from Wooddale is each, each community would have to buy their own body radios and communication software for the radio rooms. We look at this cost, when we last looked at it, in the strategic planning process being anywhere from 180 to $200,000, something that we were looking to maybe start budgeting for in the, in the very near future. In the meantime, in October, the Department of Homeland Security, they announced grant funding specifically for interoperability and 17 million of that is for agencies outside of Cook County. And they're looking for not individual agencies, but consortiums. So the DuPage 911 Board has taken the lead on this again to go out and seek this grant as a county. So we've joined on with them in an effort to, you know, throw our names into the hat that we would be interested in it. It in no way obligates us at this time to go forward with it. But this funding, if it comes through, would require a 20% match from Wooddale, which if the full funding comes through and would have paid that 180 to $200,000, we're looking at maybe a cost of 35,000 to 40,000. Same time, along with that, the ETSB says, you know what, we're going to put away some money for the 20% match. So this is just an informational report to let you know that we are seeking this grant with the 911 Board. We're hoping that it would reduce our cost down to possibly 35,000 to 40,000, but it may be even considerably lower than that that would allow us to go to this new radio system. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for giving us this information. And I think that we hope that you would get some of this grant money and that I think that it would connect everything together and I think it's a very good idea. Thank you very much.
The one last thing I would add is this, the grant came out in October. The quick turnaround was that it was due November 9th, so it has been submitted. We should be hearing in December who's receiving the monies, so we'll keep you updated.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So for number five. Number six, items for future meeting, location of noise monitors for the O'Hara Noise Commission. Wesley?
Could I just bring something up on that? Me and the chief, police chief, will be meeting with the O'Hara Noise Committee about getting these sound systems, I mean, the monitors in our area. We will be meeting on November 27th, so you know.
You can, you can make a recommendation with one in back of my house if you want to, all right? Because the planes come over my house. B is a red light camera program report and that's coming up. And anything else that want to be added to this?
Thank you. I don't know when, but sometime in the future, we should look to consider an earthquake recovery program. And I only mention that because we, in 1812, the New Madre Vault went off and destroyed land up through Chicago, but there was no Chicago then. There was nothing but trees and rivers. And geologists examining trees, river flows and everything else says, say that it goes off every two to 250 years. We'll be entering that 200-year window in four years. It may not happen in our lifetime, it may not, but it's likely to happen within the lifetime of our grandchildren. And obviously, since it hasn't happened in 200 years, nobody's cared about it for that amount of time. And, you know, we should discuss things like, does the city have earthquake coverage on its buildings? And how would we rebuild afterwards? And I'd just like that to be put on some future planning commission, committee, not commission, committee.
Can we add that to Frank?
We can certainly add that and give you a separate presentation on that, but that would fall under our disaster plan. And we do have a disaster plan that is updated on a regular basis, along with DuPage County and along with the state and along with the federal government. And what we do is, it's an ongoing program. I know that Alderman Shawkey attended one of the exercises that we did last, was it last year or two years ago, where we used a example of a?
Airplane crash, was it?
Yeah, it was, it was a pandemic flu. And what we did was, we met and did an exercise, a tabletop exercise, and the situation came up that a pandemic flu was discovered and then we had to handle it. We have the mechanisms in place, we have the equipment and we have the planning. And if, you know, if you'd like to have us explain how we would handle something like this at a later meeting, we could do that, but that's part of an ongoing plan that meets our disaster, our disaster plan that we have already in place that's continually updated.
All right, Wooddale?
I'm not sure if this is the committee, but that Ethan Woods subdivision, that would that go under Public Health and Safety about cleaning up that area and, and possibly pulling the bond and getting that project moving, cleaning up the pond or something? Is this committee, right committee?
It's really, yeah, it's really public works. If you want to bring that up at public works, we can do that, but we do have some updated information on that.
On that?
It's in process, yes. And, well, I'll wait till that committee.
All right, thank you.
All right, no further. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?